Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Quincy City Council Finance Committee to order. First, I'm gonna read into the record the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public hearing or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. And at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
President.
Counsel Kane.
President.
Counsel DeBona.
President.
Counsel Harris.
President.
Counsel Liang.
Counsel Mahoney.
President.
Counsel McCarthy.
President.
Seven members, you have a quorum.
We have a quorum. So, we're gonna get, we're gonna take the first item on the agenda, which is item 2022-059, appropriation for $53 million for district improvement financing. There were several questions that we received answers on, and any questions, any councils have any questions on this? Counsel McCarthy.
No, Mr. Chairman, I thought the briefing that Mr. Fatsies and company gave was covered all aspects and like to make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve. Do I have a second? I have a second by Counsel Harris on the motion. Counsel Mahoney.
My only concern about, I have several major concerns, is the order of land taking and the fact that we have $53 million, and there's one that's being negotiated. So, and I think what we were saying before, that we could potentially getting some grants and different things that come in. How can we assure that the way that it's budgeted out in the book, with the $17 million for the land takings, that that's gonna be what we stay with then?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think you had a little bit of a discussion today, Counsel, with Solicitor Timmons. Those are the numbers based off of the appraisals. The all encompassing order is $53 million. If there's some flexibility that is needed to handle some of these things, as has been the past practice in district improvement financing, there is some flexibility for pockets of money to be used. But based on the numbers that we developed through our appraisals and the contingency that's built in there, we feel very confident that we're gonna be able to meet that number.
So, one of the concerns that I did have, and I did speak with Counsel, I mean with Solicitor Timmons today as well, is some of the other takings that we have are still in land court about, and that hasn't come back to the city council either. So, I know there's situations where, you know, it's not as simple as you, as one might think it is when it's in this particular case. And with the way this $53 million bond is written, like on C Street, when we did the C Street order a couple of years ago, we kind of identified the takings for X amount of money, and then other monies would be used for other elements. I just am concerned because it's a lot of money. And IHOP in particular, that's the one I'm concerned with, because that one seems to be one that Foxtrot should be negotiating directly with the land owner of that, not the city of Quincy. But that's where my feelings are, so I just want to make sure that everybody knew where I was coming from. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Any of the councils wishing to speak? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll. This is for the $53 million in district improvement financing.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Six members.
Six members, the motion passes. The next is the order of land taking at 1455 Hancock Street. Counsel, Counsel McCarthy makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Counsel Harris is the second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. Clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Six members, it passes.
Okay, the next, we'll move into 2022-061, an order of land taking for 1459 Hancock Street. Motion has been made by Counsel McCarthy. Do I have a second? Second by Counsel Harris. Clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Six members.
Six members, motion carries. Next motion, 2022-073, order, order of land taking, 1620 Hancock Street. Motion has been made to approve by Counsel McCarthy. Do I have a second? Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel, Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Seven members.
Okay, motion, motion has been approved. Moving on to the next item, 2022-072C, appropriation of, for the capital improvement plan of $7 million for public buildings. We have, we have Commissioner Heinz here, and I don't know if you have anything to say. We sent, we sent, we got a lot of information over, over both by email and both from Jen Manning in our office, who did a great job laying it out for us. So, what, at this point, any councils have any questions? Any questions on the, Counsel Harris?
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Counsel President DeBona. Okay, on the motion. Okay, clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Chairman Phelan.
Yes.
Six members, it passes.
Okay. Okay, didn't expect we'd fly through this like we did, but there will be a recess until the start of the council meeting.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 21st, 7:25 PM, public hearing to order, and I just wanted, before I start, I just wanna say if my, my dad today would have been 100 years old if he was still with us, and I miss him very much. I think about him very often. I just wanted to say that. And he wouldn't want me be sitting here in politics, by no means. I'd like to call Tuesday, 21st, June 21st, at 7:25 PM, public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2022-086, utility grant of location, national grid gas, Myrtle Street. So, at this point, I'd like to ask anyone to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address, if you have any, if you wish to speak in favor. Okay, that not being said, nobody coming up. If you do not, does there anybody who would like to speak against? Please come up, speak your name and address. And if you don't, if you do not wish to speak, but would like to, your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So, seeing none, further public comment, I will close this public hearing at 7:26. Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. The city council meeting, Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. It is now 7:30. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
President.
Counsel Kane.
President.
Counsel Harris.
President.
Counsel Liang. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
President.
Counsel Palmucci. Counsel Phelan.
President.
President DeBona.
President.
Seven members, you have a quorum.
Seven members, we have a quorum. Please stand if you can. If we can get a moment of silence, please use it as you wish. To the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda.
Number one, 2022-087, an appropriation for $3,824,60.32 for year-end transfers.
Someone entertain a motion?
Make a, make a motion.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to approve. Do I have a second? Second made by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Mahoney?
I think I have a quick question for Mr. Mason. So, I know that we're transferring the 3.8, I'm assuming that was for the raises, right?
That's part of it.
Part of it, most of it, right?
Majority of it.
Majority of it. So, the reason why I'm asking, because I was, I still have a problem with this, that in the fiscal year '22 budget, we had budgeted $5.7 million for those raises, or approximately, when we did the 2023 budget, you did an automatic 3% kind of across the board. And this is gonna leave about 1.875, if it's to come out of that 5.7. What happens to that 1.875, because it's not accounted for in the fiscal '23? I'm just curious.
So, that's in reserve appropriation, so that falls to free cash, or the?
It falls to free cash, okay.
Or the operational surplus.
Which, which I understand, and the thing is, the reason why I want you to say that out loud is that there's no way to track that, other than like what we're talking about right now, because if I was just a general person looking at our budget from last year to this year, that number just disappeared, it's wiped off the amount.
Because it's, it's a reserve appropriation, Counselor, so.
I understand that, but if you go into munis right now, the 5.7 is right there, and we're doing a year-end transfer, so you wouldn't see it. So, I'm just saying, it's just not clean accounting, and I'm gonna point it out again. It's just not. I mean, you can transfer money, you can change it, but we approve something at the end of the year, fiscal year '22, it should come in at the same as the budget book when we come in, and that game was changed last year. So, it just, it's just very difficult to follow, if you're just at home trying to follow it. And I just, I just have to point out again, because this is another one where it's gonna fall into free cash. I have another question a little bit later about something else, but thank you very much.
Any of the councils? So, a motion made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. We have discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members, and the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number two, 2022-078, an appropriation for $1,355,237 to community preservation, historic, and recreation projects.
Counsel Phelan.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to approve. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Adronico. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Mahoney, you have the floor.
So, on, I'm not sure who I talked to about this, but on the recreation projects fund 4905, $30,000 for Quincy Public Schools, Clifford Marshall Elementary School PTO. The backup is only for $10,000, not $30,000? So, there's a discrepancy in the backup?
Through you, Mr. President. Project is $30,000. The backup is a mistake, I believe on that.
So, the letter that was dated May 31st, 2022, that's the backup for the, is incorrect?
Correct, correct. The appropriation is correct, the memo might be incorrect.
Okay.
Any other?
Once again, really clean stuff coming through here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney, and a discussion. So, motion made by Counsel Phelan, seconded by Counsel Adronico. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members, six members.
Six in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2022-088, an appropriation for $170,744.24 from hotel motel tax, open space, to hotel motel tax tourism.
Anyone want to entertain a motion to approve? Or move the floor. Motion made by Counsel McCarthy to approve. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number four, 2022-080, an appropriation for $170,744.24 to tourism, from hotel motel tax tourism.
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney. Yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number five, 2022-082, an appropriation to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, setting the limits of what may be expended for fiscal year 2023.
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number six, 2022-089, an appropriation for $400,000 to Parx Department capital expenditure for tree offset.
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci to approve. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Mahoney, you have the floor.
Just find out what the total amount that's in that budget right now.
Madam Auditor.
Yeah.
You're welcome to chime in.
Thank you. Currently, I believe there is, in that account, prior to the last vote that the council took, there was $175,896. Then you moved the $170,000, so there's roughly about $5,000, a little over $5,000 left in the account. The fourth quarter still has to arrive in from the state, so if you look at this council order, it does say up to $400,000. I believe what the intent is, once the money comes in from the state, then the finance office will do a journal to cover this offset.
Do we anticipate getting the difference, the 490?
I believe so, because it would have covered this, the last quarter, which has been a busy quarter.
Okay. And it should, should we not, just out of curiosity, should we not get that full 395 in to make up the 400? What happens to that account?
So, what happens is the offset would only, so if, say, we only got $350,000, that would be, what would the offset would be, and the $50,000 would still show a negative of $50,000 in that particular account.
And then would we have to make the $50,000 in place of elsewhere, is that we just spent 350?
If it could not be made up within the Parx Department budget, then it would, it would have to be raised on the recap.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, motion made, and with a second. Any of discussion on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number seven, 2022-090, an appropriation for $4,7127.97 to stabilization account from pension obligation.
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Phelan. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Mahoney, you have the floor.
Mr. Mason, I might have another question, sorry. So, for the pension obligation money that we're moving to the stabilization, stabilization fund, we also have another fund, I messed this up, sorry. A reserve fund for, that was at 5.2. Are we setting something up for just the pension obligation fund? Are we gonna be doing that as a formal request of the council, or are we just going ahead? Where are we putting that money?
This is actually, in the council, a decision that we will discuss in the fall. Stabilization accounts are fairly new in the IRS guidelines, so they have to be structured separately, where obviously stabilization is something that's existed in public accounting for.
So, I'm just trying to follow it, though, because this is, this is different than what you're just talking about, because in the 57802, there's 5.75. Is that gonna be the, what's gonna go into the, the contingency reserve fund for?
So, we originally moved 500,000, like we do every year, into the stabilization. The remaining 5.25 million will go into the pension stabilization account when it's formed.
Okay, so this 4 million's gonna go into our reserves, and then we're gonna have a separate, we'll have a separate reserve for?
For the pension fund.
And that's gonna come up later to be voted on in the fall? Okay, thank you.
So, motion to approve has been made, and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number eight, 2022-091, an order adoption of PARZ, Public Agency Post-Employment Benefits Trust.
Move approval.
Oh, you're gonna move approval.
Do we have, we have to advertise it?
No.
Counsel Palmucci, you have the floor.
Do we have to advertise it? Mr. Mason, do you want to just jump up and explain what it is?
Mr. Mason, you can go right ahead.
Certainly, this is, I always prepare for everything, but, so, it's a trust fund that has to be put in, I believe it's Regulation 151 under the IRS code, that allows a municipality, whether it's a county, local, or subregional government, to have funds held in a pension stabilization account. This was discussed during the POB. It's a separate type of asset. It's very heavily regulated, similar to most OPEB funds that we see throughout the country, except this is set aside solely to off, as, to function as an offset for any sort of volatility seen in the pension fund itself. It requires a vote of this body, it's a supermajority vote to remove any money, as well as, I believe, it requires six votes to be put in. The order that's in front of you is actually required not by a governing body, but actually US Bank, which is the fiduciary for the fund itself, requires a vote of what they call the Board of Governors, for a local municipality, it'd be the city council. But once established, the city will be funding 5.25 million for fiscal year '22, and then 5.25 million for fiscal '23, and we'll proceed in that manner until about $30 million in the fund.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. That's what I was gonna say, to explain it, exactly like that, but no, PARZ is a well-respected entity, and this is essentially hedging against any future, I don't wanna say downturns, but economic uncertainty, so I'll certainly be supporting it, and I would encourage my colleagues to as well. And I move approval.
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci. Do I have a second on the floor here? Seconded by Counsel Adronico. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Adronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number nine, 2022-092, an ordinance amending Chapter 72, Article 1, job classifications and salaries, city councilors.
The motion is ruled.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Motion made by Counsel McCarthy, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Phelan, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number 10, 2022-093, a gift for $11,475 from various donors to DIA.
Motion made by Counsel Harris to approve, seconded by Counsel Andronico, any discussion on this motion? Send a letter of thank you as well. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. This is the end of the agenda items, we're going into the approval of previous meeting minutes of June 6 of 2022. So, motion made by Counsel Andronico to approve, do I have a second? Seconded made by Counsel Kane, is that Counsel Kane? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next says, communication and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Seeing none. Unfinished business in proceeding meeting. Any councilors? Seeing none, reports of committees. We're going to go to Chairman Phelan of the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, earlier this evening, and last Wednesday, we had a Finance Committee meeting, and we went over several items, both with the DIF, the some land takings, also this capital improvement plan. So at this point, I would like to start pulling each one out of committee that have received a positive recommendation from committee. First item is 2022-058, an appropriation of $53 million for the district improvement financing, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan of the Chairman of the Finance Committee for the $53 million for the DIF. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harris, any discussion on the motion? Counsel Palmucci, you have the floor.
Thank you, President DeBona. I'm in favor of this, I'll vote in favor of this tonight, but I still reserve, I still have a lot of reservations relative to the cost of a parking garage that the city builds, owns, and operates, as well as the need for it based on current development timelines, but I know this isn't paying for the entire garage, so I think a garage is needed, we should get on with it before the prices go up anymore, but I look forward to having a more robust discussion at some future point as to the number of spaces and the actual need for the garage. So, I'll be voting in support of this, but I do have some reservations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
No.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Chairman Phelan.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to pull out, Mr. President, I'd also like to pull out 2022-060, order of land taking at 1455 Hancock Street, at a meeting we had earlier today, earlier this evening, that we had a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, so I'd like to move approval.
Positive recommendation, move to approve from Counsel Phelan, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel McCarthy, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Counsel, President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Counsel Phelan.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to, when we're doing order of land takings, there needs to be two votes, and I'd just like to have the city solicitor explain the second vote we're taking, so everyone understands it on damages.
Solicitor Timmons, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. President. As Counsel Phelan just stated, and when the city uses its eminent domain authority, it requires two separate and distinct votes. The first you've just taken, which is to conduct the eminent domain taking, the second is in relation to value. Now, because of the way Chapter 79, which is the eminent domain statute, because of the way it works, when we take property by eminent domain, we designate a value at the time of the taking, it's called the pro tanto, but the property owner does not have to accept that, and frequently, property owners will sue after the fact and seek additional money. So for that reason, the value that you vote tonight is subject to some confidentiality. Sometimes, this discussion and this vote's taken in executive session, but this council some years back made a decision that they would not proceed in that manner, and what we've done instead is, I will discuss with you the value that was determined by an appraiser hired by the city, and that's the value that's recommended for the pro tanto. I've discussed this with the Finance Chairman, and in this particular case, the amount is In your council order, it references two schedules that are attached to the order. One is Schedule A, which is the property description, the property you've taken, and the second is Schedule B, which is the value you're going to pay for the property. So what I respectfully recommend to the body is that the value of $2,995,000 be awarded as damages for the eminent domain taking, subject possibly to further action after this vote and the recording. But I would request of the Finance Chair that a motion to award damages in the amount of $2,995,000 be made, and then that would complete this particular taking.
President, I'd like to make a motion for $2,995,000.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to approve the $2.995 million for this Schedule B. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harris, do I have any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Chairman Phelan, you still have the floor.
Okay, like to go to Order 2022-061, order for land taking for 1459 Hancock Street, like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve for 1459 Hancock Street order taking. I have a seconded by Counsel Harris, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Back to Counsel, Solicitor Timmons.
Thank you, Mr. President. Using the same rationale procedure as we just did in 22-060, I will advise you that in the matter of 22-061, 1459 Hancock Street, the appraisal that was completed for this property resulted in a value analysis of $3,920,000. So I would respectfully suggest to the Finance Chair again that a motion to award damages in the amount of $3,920,000 accompany Council Order 2022-061.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion on the land taking at 1459 Hancock Street for approval of damages of $3,920,000.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to approve, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harris, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to go to the next land taking order of 022-073, order of land taking at 1620 Hancock Street, and I'd like to move approval.
Motion to approve for 1620 Hancock Street from Chairman Phelan from the Finance, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harris, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries. Solicitor Timmons, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this final taking, 2022-073, the appraisal that was completed in that matter resulted in a recommended value of $2,200,000. So for the reasons I've stated in the prior two matters, I respectfully request that the Finance Chair make a motion that damages in the amount of $2,200,000 be awarded in Council Order 2022-073.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion on the land taking on 1620 Hancock Street for $2,200,000.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to approve, 1620 Hancock Street, $2,200,000, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harris, do I have any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. President, I'd like to go to the capital improvement plan, and pull, last Wednesday, there was a meeting on these items, there were some questions that came up from councilors who have received other, all the different answers to their questions, we also have, this was approved last Wednesday, there was a positive recommendation for committee, and it's for 2022-072A, an appropriation for $15 million for the animal shelter, and I would like to move approval on this.
So we've got to move approval, a motion made by Counsel Phelan for the animal shelter for $15 million, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harris, any discussion on the motion? Just a point of privilege, I just want to say, I want to thank all the animal shelter folks that have come out tonight, thank you for all the emails that have come through to me over the last few weeks, I appreciate all your support with it, this is a long overdue process, and we're finally getting, hopefully, with a vote tonight, we can move forward and get this thing built. So I just want to thank all your time and energy put into not only the animals, but for the city of Quincy, so thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
No.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
Personal privilege, thank you. Just wanted to add my personal apology to all you fine folks in support of the animal shelter. The night that I came up with the idea to only give half now, and then expecting that we'd get the other half in a project, like, right off the bat, if I had known now, obviously, if I had known then what I know now, we would have got the Taj Mahal dog that we were presented to that night. So very sorry that there's been such a delay, but glad to see that it's gone through now, so, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel.
Mr. President?
Counsel Phelan should just keep on going.
Twenty, it's the last meeting of the year, so it's going to be, it's over the summer, so I'd like to take the next appropriation, 2022-072B, an appropriation for the capital improvement plan, $3 million for vehicles. This received a positive recommendation from committee, and I would move approval.
Move to approval for the $3 million for the vehicles in the Finance Committee, motion made by Counsel Phelan, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel McCarthy, any discussion on the motion? Counsel Mahoney, you have the floor.
Yeah, just, I just want to restate one more time that this is appropriate use of our monies, and I won't be approving this tonight, because I do think that we have a fiduciary obligation to the tax office of City of Quincy, and we're just spending money, and where we should be able to, to be able to use this, this is where we should be able to use it, is for these vehicles, so, thank you. And also, we should really be taking a closer look at who's taking vehicles home, with gas prices being at $5 a gallon, because that's something that they used to do a long time ago, where vehicles were not allowed to be taken home, and now they are, so, thank you.
So we have a motion made by Counsel Phelan, we have seconded and to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative, this motion carries.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Mr. President, I'd like to take 2022-072C, capital improvement plan for public buildings for $70 million, it received a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, I would like to motion, make a motion for approval.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan for the $7 million for the public buildings in the capital improvement plan, seconded by Counsel McCarthy, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Last and final one, it's been a long finance season. Item 2022-083, an order for the land for a temporary shelter on East Squanam Street. It has a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, I'd like to motion for approval.
Motion to approve the animal shelter relocation during the time, do I have a second?
Of course I would.
Seconded by Counsel Harris, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
That is it from the Finance Committee Chair, Phelan, thank you. Any other committees? You have a Public Works Committee, is it Counsel Harris?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Counsel, I know you're excited. It's the last night before the summer break, and Counsel McCarthy always does his best to distract me. So, and sometimes Counsel Palmucci, and sometimes Anthony next to me. So, tonight, a public hearing was held prior to this evening's City Council meeting on Council Order 2022-086, utility grant of location, National Grid Gas, Myrtle Street, positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee, motion for approval.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Harris, do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Andronico, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
President.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Any other ones, Counsel Harris?
That's it.
That's it?
Thanks.
Okay, any other reports of committees? All right, we're moving on. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Counsel Harris.
Thank you, folks. I'd like to say a few words about a gentleman by the name of Joseph J. Newton Jr., formerly of Squanam, passed on June 7, beloved husband of Mary Conley Newton, and father of Martha Hannah of Florida, and Joseph Newton, beloved former Ward 6 City Councilor, and the Assistant City Clerk, and his wife Laura, Doug and Nikki of Marshfield, Susan Newton, and her husband Sean Tolan of Squanam. He's survived by his brother Greg Newton of Braintree, and the late Fred Newton. Joseph was a very loving grandfather, known as Grampy, to Jimmy, Dougie, Jacqueline, Lindsay, Gavin, Shawnee, Abigail, and Michael, and Joseph is also survived by three great grandchildren and many nieces and nephews. Last Tuesday, I had the honor to witness the send-off that Joe's family gave him. The stories that I heard at the mass and the reception following brought smiles and tears of joy to many folks. He was a man who loved life, loved his family, and I can't leave out, he so loved going fishing. I never met Joe, but after spending the day with his family, I wish I had. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other ones? All right, so Counselor Anthony Andronico is getting married this weekend. So Saturday, June 25, is his big day, and up in Vermont?
It is.
It is.
Yes, up there too.
Did I blow your cover?
No, just, I really appreciate it to all my colleagues for that, and looking forward to finally getting married after half years together, so, looking forward to it.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Good job. Any other councilors on the presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance? Motions, orders, and resolutions? Councilors? Anyone? Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. So, we finished all the items in the Finance, which we pushed forward to get done here, with everybody getting in, so luckily, the City Council has a summer off, not your constituency, but for the summer meetings, but we're going to be reconvening on Monday, September 12 at 7:30. The week was pushed out because of the primary election on the Tuesday, the 5th, I believe, the 6th, and then we will be meeting the next week on Monday, September 19, at 7:30, both meetings, so enjoy your summer, have a good time, don't get in trouble. Motion to adjourn made by Counsel Palmucci, and it is approved.